Welcome, everyone, to the Barrington Select Board meeting for Monday, September 8. I'd like to do a call to order, beginning with a roll call attendance, please.
Samaco, present.
Man Shergin.
I have the yellow eye.
Skocia.
And Harakoff here as well. For those of you that choose to, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before I get to the agenda, I'm going to ask those in the audience and online. This week, our Barrington community lost two beautiful young adults in a tragic accident. May their memories always be a blessing to those that love them in this community. Would you please all join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. On the agenda review and approval for the Select Board, before we move to public comment, I would like to ask our town administrator to provide for both the audience online, here present, and for the general public just an update of information on some of the work that has been done back and forth over the years with the state regarding our roadways. I think it's an important topic. Honor? Oh, I'm sorry. So could I do that? Motion by me. I need a second. Thank you. Roll call.
Samaco, aye.
Thank you.
Man Shergin.
I have the yellow eye.
Skocia.
And Harakoff, aye. Thank you. Sorry, proceed, Mr. McGyver.
Absolutely. So residents have reached out to the town and to Select Board members asking, you know, what the town can do and what residents can do to help improve traffic safety in Barrington. As a lot of folks know, the state roads are under the jurisdiction of the Department of Transportation, but that doesn't mean that the town and residents don't have a role in advocating for safety improvements. So there are 25 miles of state roads in Barrington, and it's important that we can all join together and talk about what we can do, what role the town can play, what role the town does play, and what role residents can play to help improve the safety of these 25 miles of roads. And the state, for its part, it's important that they hear from us, right? They have transportation infrastructure all over the state, and it's important that they hear from local officials, folks like our police and our firefighters, but also local officials like the Select Board and staff and residents as well in their decision-making process. So the town, for its part, the state does most of their transportation planning with what they call a 10-year plan, and that is the local regional planning commissions are actively involved in the development of that 10-year plan. Communities propose projects which are vetted through that process and added to the state's 10-year plan. They're shifted as necessary through funding and the state aligning resources. Barrington has two appointed commissioners to the Stratford Regional Planning Commission, and we also have staff on the Transportation Committee which focuses on those projects. I'll point out that one of the projects that's been recommended through that 10-year plan and through the Transportation Advisory Committee is safety improvements to the Newtown Plains Road and Route 125 intersection. And so the state has no active plans to pursue that project, but that and many others have been advocated for by the town and Stratford Regional Planning through the state's 10-year plan. So another aspect that the town pursues regularly is reporting on crash data to our state partners. And so that very frequently helps facilitate and encourage the state to perform road safety audits at locations that are identified through crash data as needing improvements. And so two recent examples of where the town, through its advocacy with crash reporting, we've been able to have a road safety audit performed at the Beauty Hill Road and 125 intersection, and also at the Scruton Pond Road and 125 intersection. And so that's an important feedback loop that the state has, data that we have access to. We're, you know, reporting to these scenes our public safety professionals. So additionally, as properties develop and impacts to traffic change, both the Planning Board and the Zoning Board, or its purpose, often requires traffic studies to be conducted to understand how development that's happening, the proposed development before those boards, may impact traffic safety and what mitigating factors can be accomplished. The state plays a role in that also. You know, this development with the residential properties behind and the commercial properties along 125, the state, for its part, required a center turn lane for the southbound lane of 125 and a deceleration lane on the northbound lane of 125 for access into this driveway. And so that level of review happening as development is proposed is an important part of the process. So despite our continued efforts, our recommendations and requests aren't always approved by the state. A recent example, for anybody that has followed the Select Board or the school board's activities, is the placement of reduced speed school zone signs on Route 125 and Route 9 in the vicinity of the schools. So it was October of 2024 that the town Select Board and the school board unanimously voted to send that request. At a local expense, we would pay for the signs and install them, and that request was denied. We're working with our elected leaders to try to get that decision adjusted, either reversed or have some alternative to improve the safety around the schools. But this is why it's important that we have a collective voice and we exercise the advocacy options that we have. Another, you know, example of where sometimes things take a long time, and even if resources are available, they're reallocated, that Beauty Hill Road road safety audit was conducted in 2019, and there have been continued delays in the state implementing any of the recommendations for the state to make for safety improvements at that intersection. A road safety audit is a very comprehensive process, countless meetings and site visits and data collection, and it's an engineering firm that prepares, you know, over 100-page report of the intersection and pot recommendations with cost estimates. And so there's been some recent progress, and we hope that we can get the resources allocated, state resources allocated, to improvements at Beauty Hill Road, which has already been designed. There are transportation alternatives designed for that intersection. So residents, for their part, have avenues for sharing concerns and reporting concerns to the state to help in the allocation of resources. One direct and local example is just contacting the District 6 office. So Department of Transportation is split up into districts. District 6 serves Barrington, and you can call them, you can email, they have offices in Durham. And so that direct feedback allows them to report up the chain of command about what they're hearing from within their districts and the challenges that they're facing in their districts. So another important opportunity that residents have, and local officials have this opportunity also, and we meet with our elected leaders, but share your concerns with your state-elected leaders, your representatives, your senator, your executive counselor, write to the governor. Our elected leaders' hearing from communities and the priorities in those communities definitely moves the needle when it comes time to allocate resources and consider what projects are moved forward with and which aren't. Also, that I mentioned the 10-year plan, the state holds public hearings, that's updated every two years. The state holds public hearings to solicit input on that 10-year plan, and so there's opportunity there. But also, every project that the state pursues and funds, they hold public hearings as part of that process. So they design the project, they hold a public hearing to, you know, present the preliminary findings, and then they, you know, go through a process to select what the solution is. They hold another public hearing on that and then around construction. And so providing input and helping to contribute to that process is important. So I think, you know, like I said, I think we all have an important role in advocating for safety improvements, and I think the, you know, local officials and residents have tools they can exercise, and I think all working together will give us the best opportunity to move the needle on the limited resources that the state has allocating some of those to safety improvements in Barrington.
Thank you. Thank you for that summation. I'm going to read the rules for public comment and then open public comment. Rules for public comment are stated as meetings are open to the public. Public participation is, however, limited. If you wish to be heard by the Select Board, please note that there are two public comment portions of each meeting to speak on items on the agenda or matters pertaining to the business of the Select Board. In addition, public hearings may be scheduled for public comment on specific matters. Speakers must be residents of the town of Barrington, property owners in the town of Barrington, and/or designated representatives of recognized civic organizations or businesses located within the town of Barrington. When addressed and permitted to speak by the chair, that would be me, speakers first need to recite their name and address for the actual record. Visitors should address their comments to the chair and the Select Board as a body and not to individual members. Each speaker should be provided a single opportunity for comment, either in the beginning of the meeting or in the end, limited to three minutes. Each of the sessions of public comment are limited to 15 minutes. Visitors should not expect a response to comments or questions since the Select Board may not have discussed or taken a position on a matter. Public comment is not a two-way dialogue between speakers, Select Board, or the town administrator. The chair will preserve strict order and decorum at all Select Board meetings. Obscene, violent, disruptive, disorderly comments or those likely to induce violence, disruption, or disorder are not permitted and would not be tolerated. Complaints regarding any town staff should be directed privately to the town administrator. Thank you. At this time, I'll open public comment for those online and in person, starting with people online. Should you wish to speak, please mouse over your screen and click the small hand that says "raise" at the top of your device. Seeing as no one has chosen to be recognized, is there anyone in-house who would like to speak during public comment? Please join us and state your name and address, please. Just to be respectful, I do set a timer when people are speaking, okay?
Don Bueller, 2186 Franklin Pierce Highway. Not really sure if it's appropriate to speak now or if a public hearing, if there's time for the public to speak when the topic is discussed.
Do you want to share the topic, and I'll let you know whether we-
Invasive species mitigation.
I would probably do that at the end of the... You want right now, sir?
Yeah, I think now makes sense. It's invited guests. It's not a public hearing yet. It might be a public hearing at some point in the future, but certainly if you have comments on that, now's a great time.
Yeah, but I just wanted to speak before, in case you guys decided to vote.
Okay. So yes, your name and address again, if you would, and I'm going to start the timer. Thank you.
Don Bueller, 2186 Franklin Pierce Highway.
Thank you, sir.
So I've read through this, and the limited information that I have is what Mr. McGyver put in his summary and a communication that we had. And I fully support what the plan is that Swains Lake has presented. I'm a little concerned that it's very limited in scope and capacity in terms of who, which lakes and bodies of water it would support, and being specific to invasive species versus other problems that we have with lakes. I won't go into a lot of detail now, but I'm hoping that we can have a discussion about how the town can support all of the lakes in Barrington as needed for these issues because our lakes are really important to all of us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak and be recognized at this time? Okay, seeing as there is not anyone raising their hand, I will close this portion of public comment and reserve the second public comment for the end of the meeting. Up next are public hearings and invited guests. Do we have a school board liaison present?
Welcome back.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. We met last Tuesday night, and the focus was, we had a tour of the elementary school. We were using one good-sized room or a classroom-type area in the SAU building for specialized services, which meant that we were pulling kids out of the elementary school and walking them down to the SAU building for their program services and then bringing them back. That created a couple of problems, and the fact that the time it took to get them down and get them back took away from the programs. So we were able to move some space around over the summer, not we, the maintenance staff, and we moved that program up into the elementary school where it stays on-site, and we moved a couple of the staff that were up in the elementary school down into the SAU where if it gave them room to have parent meetings without being concerned about the kids seeing parents in the building, and it also made it easier for staff to transition that now work in the SAU building to go up to the elementary school if they need to. So they gave us a tour of that, saw, we saw how they changed that space. So I think that's going to be a big bonus for the kids that are getting, were getting the services down at the SAU building. Opening day at all three buildings went relatively well. We had a report from all three of the principals, and they all echoed pretty much the same thing, that the kids had adjusted well getting into the buildings and stuff. Enrollment, new enrollments down slightly in the elementary school. I think our bump, don't hold me to it, I think our bump right now is in fourth grade that has kind of, but from kindergarten, first, and second, third grades, the numbers are down a little bit, which is kind of what we had expected. Didn't expect the enrollment to be down quite as much. I think it's down 12 students, probably, give or take, and we asked what they thought triggered that, and they said that charter schools, homeschooling, and kids actually moving out of the district. So that was something I think we'd been looking at for a while and stuff, so we'll see. You know, I'm of the opinion that, again, it's tough to, when you look at the cost of homes in the town of Barrington right now, you know, I get young families coming in, buying these houses to start a family. And so the majority of the people that are purchasing new construction in this town now, either their kids are out of school or they're in a high school situation, but they're not, very few of them coming in with young families. The middle school has, there's three water wells on the property, and there's been, like everywhere else in Barrington, there was arsenic in there, and the state has a very tough threshold for how much arsenic can be in drinking water, especially in school buildings. And what we had been doing was, there was one that was pretty heavily concentrated. So when I say "we," the school district for a number of years has been combining the wells in such a way that they can, that the wells, there was, there's one well that is, has very little arsenic in it, and there's one higher, and there's one kind of in the lower range. So they had been kind of mixing the water to make sure that they stayed below the state thresholds. And so we, the facilities manager had started looking at a system to eradicate this. Our options were very limited, and so what we ended up doing is that, at this time, we tested the water in the two wells, the two better wells, and realized that the arsenic is down considerably below state levels. So what we've done is taken that higher-level arsenic well, it's not offline, it's out of service, because if we take it offline, then when the district gets ready for whatever needs to use it, it's a pretty expensive process to get it back. So by taking it, I'm not sure if I'm using the term correctly, but by taking it offline, it allows us to be able to go back to, I call it mixing the water because there's mixing valves in there, but we're able to test the water as it comes out of the well. It's not like it in this big tank, and you can't tell which is which. They can test it. It was tested again the other day. So the important thing is, water is safe to drink at the middle school, it's safe to drink in all of our schools, but that is something that the state's been watching, and you can go on the state website, you can see Barrington's on there, like every other school that has an issue.
Let me just interrupt you. Do we have the ability to take the well that we do not prefer and certainly don't want our kids drinking? Can we make that non-potable so it just goes to, say, the toilet system? Is there a way to change the plumbing within the building to do that?
Probably would not be cost-effective to be able to do that based on the way the building has been set up.
Okay.
I think the, I think the most cost, I had actually indicated that I, personally, that I was interested in spending the money to put the system online and keep all three wells in place, but, you know, we ultimately decided to test the two wells to make sure that we were safe, the two wells we're using are more than safe. So whether or not down the road, like a year from now, two years from now, three years from now, the school board decides to invest in that system, the system, and again, way over my head, but I'll speak in generic terms, it's, when you put the system in, it would, however it filters the water to get the arsenic out, you get to a point, and based on the amount of water that our district uses, in four to five years, you would have to pull this, you'd have to redo the system, and it would cost you, so voterly, four or five years, it'd probably cost you $15,000 to $16,000. So at this point, there's not a need to do it, so the district made the decision to basically work off them two wells. I know that back when they built the building, they put two wells in because there wasn't enough water in one to take care of what they needed, moved over X number of feet, punched another well in and got it, and then at some point made the decision that they actually, a third well got put in, but so-
Thank you.
That was kind of a long gone-on thing, say, we still have good water. And we're, we, like you folks, we're in the process of getting ready to start our budget season, where they're advertising for people that may be listening, the school district put a thing out, they're advertising for people that might be interested in being on the Budget Committee again, and we're concerned about, based on, you know, I don't want to get too deep in the politics of the world, but we're in the same predicament everybody else is, there's not as much federal money that's coming, and so we're apt to not receive as much federal money as we normally would expect it, so.
Have you retained any of your Budget Committee from the prior year?
We, so the way it's set up is, I believe that they'll have the opportunity, but the way that the school district does it is, you do it for one year, and if you want to continue to do it, just throw your name in the hat. So I don't, they haven't told us whether anybody has stepped up to do it or not.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Next up is the issuance of a building permit at Berry River Road, private road for Christian Habershaw at map 102, lot 35.
As Mr. Habershaw steps to the podium, I'll just share, this is a very straightforward application supported by staff and the Planning Board at their most recent meeting.
And if you could state your name and address again for us, thank you.
Christian Habershaw, 459 Berry River Road.
Okay, please proceed.
Yeah, so it's just a 96-square-foot addition to our kitchen, just two exterior walls, you know, pretty, pretty small area. If you look at the house from the pictures, the kitchen kind of juts out like a knell, so we're basically just squaring off the front of the house. I've been in contact with the road board about improvements that I'm going to make around the curve right near the house, but yeah, pretty, pretty straightforward.
And those road improvements meet the policy, the 10%.
Any questions, board members?
I don't have a question, but this seems to be one of the first real improvements to a road that we've seen in this, in this process.
The road board's been doing a good job since I've been there the past couple of years.
Any other-
This is a substantive change.
Yeah.
I move that we authorize the issuance of the building permit for map 102, lot 35 on Berry River Road as presented.
And a second from Mr. Skocia, thank you. We have a roll call, please.
Samaco, aye.
Man Shergin.
I have the yellow eye.
Skocia.
Harakoff, aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Happy new dining room space. Next up before us is the invasive species mitigation funding for Barrington's water. We have some invited guests to present.
Ron Allard's invited guest. I'll give him an opportunity to make his way to the table, it looks like. I'll change the camera, and I'll give a brief introduction. I'll just summarize what I have in my town administrator report and then add one detail which I left out as it relates to the background. So Barrington, we have historically relied on DES and the local lake associations to address and affect any change to lake health. That doesn't mean the town doesn't have a supporting partner role in this through the Conservation Commission and other activities, but the primary responsibility has been left with the state and the local lake associations. And so I included some details on how the state approaches invasive species in the town administrator report. There's more details available online. The state does make grant funding available. My understanding of that program is, year over year, it's a diminishing grant availability should you have an infestation and require remediation. So that's a, it's a, it's a good solution in the early years of an infestation, but the shift, the burden of the cost shifts to the localities, whether it be the lake association or if a municipality were to be involved as time goes on. So there have been discussions previously from the Swains Lake Association, I know the conversations with the Conservation Commission and town officials years ago about trying to find some way for local funding to be available for invasive species. The Select Board also talked about that as an idea when we were reviewing some of the details for the Ayers Lake Boat Launch Improvement Project, about having some, looking at some mechanism to provide funding for invasive species. And so it isn't an uncommon thing for a municipality to involve itself in. Many, many water-rich communities have some sort of funding mechanism. It's not usually significant, but some sort of funding mechanism available to complement other funding sources for invasive species. So Ron, I met with Ron, he had worked with some neighbors, lakefront property owners, and Ron put together a petition warrant article that aimed to affect some funding source for invasive species. And so as I invite anybody who has an idea for a petition warrant article, come sit with me, we can talk about it, we can talk about what works, what doesn't work, what's legal, what isn't legal, and look, explore other opportunities. So the crux of Mr. Allard's petition warrant article was utilizing existing funding available in the Conservation Fund to be available for invasive species mitigation. And so the specifics were reserving some percentage up to $50,000 and then retaining that and not spending any more than that in a year. And there were also some limitations on which water bodies would be eligible, and public access was a big part of that, size and public access. The challenge is, and, you know, Mr. Allard, we talked about this, we, I talked to the town's attorney to explore anything that I didn't know about, there's no legal mechanism for town meeting or even the Select Board to direct the Conservation Commission to spend the Conservation Fund dollars in any way. And so that limitation means the petition article, any petitioned article can go in front of voters, it doesn't have to be legal to go in front of voters, but if voters approve it and the town can't enforce it, that isn't helpful to anybody because we are stuck telling people, hey, you approved this, but it's advisory only, we have no teeth to enforce this. So in talking with Mr. Allard, I suggested that we bring this idea, this baseline idea of local funding for invasive species in Barrington lakes to the Select Board as kind of a continuation of previous conversations, but see if it's something the Select Board is interested in exploring. And if there's a nod from the select board, that would give, you know, myself and the conservation commission and any lake association interested the opportunity to, to start meeting and exploring opportunities while we still have time ahead of the twenty twenty six town meeting. I will point out one additional detail that the town's working on. And I know there was mention about invasive species versus other impacts to lake health like cyanobacteria. And so the, uh, planning board, uh, at their leadership, the planning board has secured a twenty thousand dollar grant through the Piscataqua region estuaries partnership. And this, this, they, uh, this group, excuse me, makes grant dollars available to protect the health of the Piscataqua region, period. And so it's kind of open ended. And so the town of Barrington applied and we're using that twenty thousand dollar grant to develop a draft septic ordinance for lakefront properties. Also looking at reviewing stormwater management regulations as it relates to runoff into the lakes. And then they're going to put together a shorefront lawn care outreach program. And so the, you know, cyanobacteria, the, the two biggest culprits are often septic systems, aging or failing septic systems and fertilizer or other runoff from, uh, ornamental lawns and gardens. And so this grant program, you know, certainly no one thing will solve any of these problems. But this grant program is something the planning board's excited about. Some of those components will go before the planning board to consider recommending ordinance changes to voters in, this would be in March of twenty twenty seven. This project will take some time. But that's, you know, in terms of lake health in general, that aspect of not necessarily invasive species, but, uh, these, um, cyanobacteria blooms is something that's on the town's radar also. So Ron, please add to that background or your motivation, uh, in the preparing the petition warrant article and bringing the conversation to select board.
Yeah. Ron Allard, uh, one forty three Baxter Lane. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about this invasive species thing and specifically about milfoil in, in Swains Lake. I think Connor gave a pretty good update, so I think I'll make my three minutes. Milfoil appeared in Swains Lake about five years ago. The first treatment was eighty thousand dollars. It was paid a hundred percent by the state. They paid fifty percent for the second treatment and they're going to pay thirty percent for the next treatment. So obviously their funding is going down. You know, the cost has got to be covered by other sources. The Swains Lake Association has taken kind of the lead on this, um, and they've done a great job. But their dues are twenty five dollars a year and they have twenty five percent of the membership of the lakefront properties. So this is, you know, this is an issue that's clearly well beyond their means and other stakeholders that step up frankly. The petition we have is got seventy five signatures. And it's basically, it is Connor said to move money from conservation commission relocated toward this purpose. It would have no impact on taxes, which we thought was important to get it supported. Swains Lake properties pay roughly about one point seven million dollars a year in property tax. If you assume that the, the increase in your assessment is twenty to five to thirty percent, that means the town gets a half a million dollars a year because Swains Lake. So it's a significant asset to the town. I can say that on my road, we have a road association. We have small, we have three small roads. Less than half are year round properties. And this, nobody, uh, nobody's in the school system from our, our, our three roads. And we don't, you know, they don't plow, town doesn't plow our roads and then they don't, they don't, they don't maintain our roads. So, you know, a hundred thousand dollars a year going to the town, a lot of people feel like we're not getting a lot back. We believe the conservation commission, this is within their scope. This is a good thing for them to do. It's, it's clear within the mission statement. We also believe the town lakes are an equally valuable resource, both for recreation and for environmental than the conservation spaces. And clearly they're, they're, they're a better financial asset, obviously. So we think this is an appropriate thing to do. The roughly one third of the town is currently in conservation. And that number will only increase, um, as sub, the conservation subdivisions will continue to put land in conservation. So even if the conservation commission buys no more property, the, the, the amount of land in conservation will continue to increase. So we think redirecting some of the funding toward property purchases toward this, uh, maintaining an, an important asset for the town is appropriate. That said, as Connor said, the, you know, we are concerned that the, the petition article will be non-binding. And we are more than open to exploring other options, discoveries, you know, talking about other options. Including, you know, a town, a capital reserve, something like that. We're open to that. That said, uh, thank you again for your time and, uh, time and attention and hopefully your support.
Thank you.
And some questions? So, you know, we don't have control of the conservation budget. So have you had those conversations yet or is that?
Um, their next meeting is later than this. So I was going to be, I was going to try to get on their agenda and talk with them. It's non-binding, but I think, you know, in my experience, they've always been very reasonable people. So hopefully, uh, you know, we can work something out.
Yeah. And to that end, I think the, I think there are options, right? Like I said, a lot of communities find ways to do this. I learned recently that Nottingham for its portion, portion of North River Lake has funding available to lakes in Nottingham. But before I or had other staff spend time on this, I, I kind of wanted some direction from the select board. Next steps would include certainly coordination discussions with conservation commission. I've already talked to the chair about the, the topic, so he wasn't surprised. But more in-depth analysis and discussion, looping in additional lake associations. We weren't able to, to reach out to all of them. And I think, yes.
Yeah. So I, uh, do, do you want to go first? Go ahead.
Oh, uh, well, my second question was how active are the lake associations currently in working with, uh, landowners about, you know, runoff and?
They're pretty good. They have a website. I can always speak for Wayne, Swains Lake one. They're pretty, they have a website. They have an annual meeting. They talk about it. They're pretty big into loons too. But I, I think they're pretty good about it. They've, they've done a good job on the, on the milfoil. They spent about two grand this year, you know, putting all the permits in place. We're not going to have treatment this year, but they, they already spent the money to make sure it was required, although everything was in place for it. So they're doing a pretty good job of following up on this. I think the biggest issue is, you know, like I say, twenty five dollar per year dues and twenty five percent membership. You know, it's not going to cover eighty thousand dollars worth of milfoil treatment.
So my questions were, have you done a study? I know that your indication was that Swains has public access, but we also know that Payers has public access. And I will say that because of Airbnbs and the ability of people to use their lakefront homes for people that are coming into the area to vacation, we may not know whether there are people coming from out of state and other areas using North River Lake or, you know, Mendham's, Winkley Pond even for that matter. I try and track how big our Airbnb population is in this area, just because it holds interest to me. How many people we're attracting with our water bodies. But I'm wondering if we have done any studies where we're sending people out throughout the summer months to watch and see who's parking and dropping boats and so.
We used to actually. There was a lake host, a program that was, uh, managed by the Swains Lake Association. They had to put that on the back burner because of milfoil. So they tracked who was coming in and, you know, they tried to get them, give them recommendations if they saw any problems. They tried to get them addressed. The studies are pretty conclusive, by the way. The, the milfoil issue came from transient voters. You know, people came in for the day, put in for the day. You know, with the infestations, it's, it's pretty clear that's where it came from.
Do we know what, um, a drought year like this has for an impact on milfoil and it's looming?
I don't know, but this year I, I, they were going to treat this year, but they decided not to. So it, it didn't cause it to bloom. I'll say that. It didn't cause it to increase. That's for sure.
Yeah. I'm just curious if anybody's checked with like Department of Environmental Services to see.
The Swains Lake position, they do water samples on a regular basis and they send them to UNH. So there's a tracking program for the water quality that's been ongoing for years.
Okay. Thank you for that.
And these are questions that we can research. If the select board's interested in taking the conversation further, you know, this is certainly something that we can find answers to those questions and, and understand the, uh, big picture.
Well, I think especially as we've talked about like Ayers Lake and the impact that the boat launch that's next to, um, what's the name of the?
Camp Fireside.
Camp Fireside's area. I think that it's important for us to pay attention to this water quality and certainly the impact that it has. So I do think that there's certainly some data gathering to do.
Thank you.
I'm very interested in just exploring things.
Yeah, absolutely.
Financial solutions at this point.
Madam Chair, I had a question.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Because I haven't used any of these boat launches. Is there any restriction, any licensing requirement to use it? Or can anybody, for, for public access, can anybody just show up and, and put their boat in?
Anybody can just show up, put their boat in. They, there are signs. One of the things the select board talked about is, um, creating some location for a centralized cleanout area. One of the, uh, Mr. Allard mentioned the lake host program. So it's against the law in New Hampshire to travel with any vegetation on your boat, period. Doesn't have to be invasive, uh, any vegetation on your boat. It's illegal. And so the, um, a lake host program, they don't have any authority necessarily, but it's an opportunity to look at the boats, track that data. But if we had a, a place, you know, say at the hill on Ramsdale Lane to say, hey, there's water available, go wash your boat out. Now there's, those facilities can get increasingly costly if you, you know, use hot water and, and some of the, the, you know, pressure and other things. But having some kind of centralized location, but no, the, the state operated launch on Swains Lake is public access. There's signage. There's, you know, uh, indication of the laws. And the access on Ayers Lake, there's also invasive species signage, uh, but it's open to the public.
Okay. Interesting. Cause before I moved here, living out of state, even if I wanted to put my kayak in a public boat launch, I had to get permission. I had to sign saying that where the last body of water was that my kayak was in and that I had rinsed it since then. And then I had to get just like, kind of like a wristband, uh, because this was such a problem. So while I don't want to suggest something that's going to be prohibitively expensive, the idea of some sort of centralized tracking of who's putting their boats in, has it been rinsed? You know, where was it last? Might be interesting to explore.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that.
And maybe recommendations for the campgrounds. I think you mentioned Airbnbs, which is a good point. But, but maybe if the lake associations and the conservation commission could work on some kind of toolkit to provide the campgrounds or even Airbnb hosts best practices and hey, let's keep these assets. So, uh, the, you know, straw poll necessarily, but the, is the select board interested in, in taking this further and exploring, uh, how funding or other opportunities may exist for lake health?
Yes, definitely.
Yes. Okay.
Great.
There's the answer.
Thank you.
Okay. I skipped over something very important, so I will make a motion to approve the September eighth consent agenda.
That's next.
Well, I know we didn't motion to approve the consent agenda, like to, to say we didn't want to add anything to it. And I added something to it. So, um, we have a second. We could, um, so anyway, would you like to approve the consent agenda for September eighth?
Samaco, aye.
Skoshia, aye.
Okay. Motion carries.
Great.
Thank you. Any other appointments, Connor?
No.
That wonderful. Moving on to staff report by our town administrator.
Yes, thank you. I will start with September work anniversaries. Another top heavy month. Tim Booty in the fire department for thirty one years. John Janelle, currently our interim fire chief, has been with the department for thirty years. Amy English, former library director, now library processor. She's worked for the town for twenty nine years. Dana Drake, the highway department, you'll see him on the side of the Barrington's roadside, mowing this time of year. Certainly wave, but he's worked for the town for twenty five years, drive slow and wave, or keep both hands on the wheel and nod, something, you know. Acknowledge his twenty five years in Barrington, excuse me. Barbara Irvine, land use administrative assistant for twenty two years. Sarah Bailey, our assistant parts and recreation director, joined the town six years ago. Crystal Murky, the tax collector finance officer, joined the town four years ago. Eli Strickland, firefighter, uh, three years ago was hired. And I will point out, he spent some of that three years as the only full-time firefighter because of vacancies. And so he's a tremendous asset to the town. Tyler Howe, one of those gentlemen, we were able to hire and fill one of those vacancies as a full-time firefighter, joined us this time last year. And Kayla Piva, the building, uh, and assessing administrative assistant, joined the town of Barrington this time last year.
Oh, a year already. Well, thank you.
Moving on, uh, twenty twenty six budget development. So as you know, budgets are, the budget development process is well underway. Departments had their initial budget proposal due to myself and the finance administrator today. We will spend the next couple of weeks going through that budget and, uh, working with department heads and preparing an initial budget, uh, excuse me, an initial budget proposal for the advisory budget committee and select board. Uh, we expect budget binders to be ready, uh, later this month. And on October fifteenth, we'll make that initial budget presentation to the budget committee. And on October twentieth, we'll make that initial budget presentation to the select board. As planned, all of the department discussions will be made at the advisory budget committee meetings. Those are available for virtual participation and will be recorded just like they were last year. And we'll bring updates to the select board throughout the process. And it won't be till December that the select board, uh, really has their proposal from the advisory budget committee and reviews and implements those recommendations for the twenty twenty six town meeting. Questions about budget development process? Moving on, town center day. So we have a new name since the last time we talked about this resident engagement event. You'll remember that last meeting, this was a mouthful. Uh, I won't even try to remember what we threw together to try to make something sound interesting, but town center day is the day. So town center day is September twenty first. This is at its core, a resident engagement event with an opportunity to talk about progress on achieving the town center vision. There are two separate components of this event. The first part, we're calling progress and possibilities. And it's a presentation. It's a formal sit-down presentation, discussion, question and answer about the progress report on the town center and talking about the next steps. So there'll be presentations from the folks at UNH Cooperative Extension, downtowns and trails. Our consultant team that's grant funded will be presenting on the analysis that they've done and the recommendations that they have. And so that, uh, that portion of the event will, uh, provide for the best opportunity for collective back and forth feedback and discussion. We'll also have a long form feedback opportunity, uh, either written or online that folks can participate in. But then at noon, we're going to move out to the common for the portion called gather on the common. And we'll have stations set up, probably twelve or fifteen stations with specific snippets of, of, uh, progress that we've made relative to the town center or future opportunities. And staff and volunteers will be at those stations to have more casual feedback from folks. You don't have to go to the morning session to the come to the afternoon session. But this is also in conjunction with Sunday that the energy committee is working on. And so we'll have family friendly activities at every station also. We'll have a band. There'll be a concert from, uh, noon to two. At one o'clock, we'll be doing a ribbon cutting for Welcome Way. Smokey Bear will be there with the new forestry truck called Smokey Barrington, uh, that the, the kids named at Barrington Kids Vote. And so the, the idea is to give a little taste of, of what the town center means, of what the town center vision actually is. And the economic, uh, development component, uh, we've invited area businesses to have a presence on the common if they're able. Unfortunately, with staffing, it's kind of difficult to have their business open and also have a presence on the common. But what we're working on is maybe some opportunities to have, um, some sort of like a coupon program where that day residents that are at the common or at the elementary school can go patronize those area businesses. Um, and really, uh, you know, facilitate that connection between the community development and the economic development, uh, and, and how it all connects. And so people have an opportunity to show up at the field and realize they can just walk to a Roma Joe's or walk to Kayla's Country Store, pop across the street to Milo's or Dante's. So, uh, it is shaping up to be a terrific event. And again, it's the fall equinox, which is the Sunday, the energy committee for their purpose. They are programming a whole slate of events and, and bringing in vendors to talk about, um, solar energy in general and, and the value of solar energy. Questions about town center day?
You asked us to sign up for
Yes.
setting up and breakdown. Just give us a few details of that.
Yes. So the, the setting up and breakdown will hopefully be mostly facilitated. But what we did was, uh, we had the gather on the common portion. Uh, our goal is to have that set up and ready to go at eleven thirty. So that if the morning session is short or folks show up early just for that session, um, we're, we're set up and ready to go. So we have, uh, two kind of, um, volunteer blocks. Everybody's welcome the whole time. But just for scheduling purposes, we set up, uh, an initial block from eleven thirty to one and then a block from one, uh, to two thirty. And so, uh, sign up if you're available, uh, sign up for one or both of those. And, uh, we'll, we'll figure out where folks are. So the volunteer pool includes the select board, the planning board, that the Barrington Center Development Committee, which oversees the Tiff District and the Trail Interconnectivity Stakeholder Group. So those, that group of volunteers who have all been part of the town center vision and progress over the last year in earnest, um, will hopefully be accompanying and, and staffing stations around the common to be able. to be able to interact and collect feedback from residents about the work that we're doing. So in terms of setup and breakdown, we're going to have kids activities at each station. So, you know, helping kids with the kids activities or having the the whether it's poster boards or other displays that we're engaging residents with.
So will you assign us to a table or?
That's the plan, yes, yep. Once we have, once we know who's available and in what time slots, we will divvy up the responsibilities and communicate that to everybody. We'll also have a passport for participants in the event with details of each station so they can go around, get a stamp. And local businesses are donating to some Barrington raffle baskets so that we can raffle those off and kind of continue that economic development tide. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to Granite Chapter Old Truck Meet. So for those of you who are available to attend, this was awesome. It was, I've never been before, I wasn't in Barrington. When it was in Barrington, I never went to wherever they moved it to, that airport they moved it to. Dierin, thank you. It was awesome. It was, it was so exciting to see the Barrington Common property full of energy and excitement. Certainly, the equipment that they brought in was incredible. And they had vendors and the American Legion were there. And and so it was, it was a really, really awesome event and use of the property. There was a lot of excitement. And I'll point out, there's a lot of excitement from parts of the community that we don't hear a lot of feedback from regularly. And so to to be able to have, to make that property available and bring an event like that back to the community was really exciting. I don't know if you wanted to add anything, Jim? I know you were central to bringing this back.
If you guys haven't been, I suggest you you show up next year. I mean, all walks of life, families, kids having a great time. I think the, you know, one hiccup we had was a little bit of parking in the in the post office where people shouldn't have been, but it was great. Every, everybody was respectful. There was no accidents, to my knowledge. But just to see the families out there that may not get access to check out these trucks or or to see that part, but to see everybody back in town in Barrington was awesome.
The old fire truck was really fascinating.
Yeah.
So the group's interested in coming back next year. And so we had, it was kind of a short timeline earlier this year when they were having trouble with the venue they had moved it to and heard that it might be possible to bring it back to Barrington. And so the agreement we made with the group when they came to Barrington this time was to make some in kind contributions to the property. So we had recently acquired the property. There was trail work that needed to be done, there was tree work that needed to be done. And their membership, you know, a lot of their membership is are working professionals that that work in this industry. And so they made some great improvements to the trail that connects over to the elementary school, which was awesome. They did a fair amount of tree work along around the back of the property, some really huge trees, cleaning things up, tidying up the property. And so that's how we managed this this kind of first year. But as we look to having them back, if the select board's interested, just wanted to get a sense from the select board, what you felt like worked well or what you'd like to see different as we talk about having them back next year.
So feedback from area businesses, let's invite all of them, whether it's Jackie's or Kale's or Dante's or Milos, to have food tents there as well. I think that I appreciate that the American Legion was there. But if the purpose is to also throughout the weekend to build on the the business and economic development, we need to be thinking of those possibilities as well.
Great.
I I think it's it's great. I mean, even if we do the continued, you know, improvements that they can do because there's still more trees to cut, still some doctoring up that we can do on trails. But I I think that's a very cost effective way to do kind of like a minimum, but to also improve the property at the same time.
So is there an openness from the select board to consider putting together a scope for in kind contributions? Again, for next year, identify, there are certainly improvements that many improvements that could be made to the property that are mutually beneficial, right?
I mean, tree work sounds awesome to get that done. Clean up maybe some volunteers.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll start those conversations. Mr. Vice Chair, if you're willing to join me in that, again, that would be great. And we'll start looking at firming something up for next year. And we'll probably have a formal vote at this, at a future select board meeting to solidify that. But we have our marching orders. Moving on, I included in your packet a copy of a project update relative to the Swains Lake Dam projects. We're on track to be able to do the Lakeside Oaks Drive culverts, the rip rap filter, which is part of the letter of deficiency with DES, and underwater gate box repairs. Those projects and the permit application were reviewed by the conservation commission at the recent meeting. And they signed on to that application and a request for DES for expedited review, which will be helpful. The projects will go out to bid soon and will, the select board in upcoming meeting will award those projects. And they're scheduled for this fall. Questions about that? Our Public Works Director, Mike Netto, started this past Tuesday. He has had a whirlwind of a week. And he is quickly becoming acclimated to the town and the responsibilities of the town. We are very fortunate to have retained Mark Morrow, the former road agent, in a full time capacity. So they're spending a lot of time together, showing him around, going through the first budget process and in just general education about how Barrington operates and how it's a little different than Dover. But he's still very excited and getting getting out in the field a lot, which I think is important early on. So if you see him around, make sure to say hello. Conservation Commission contributions to Southeast Land Trust Conservation Projects around Ayers Lake. So the Conservation Commission has been approached by Southeast Land Trust to requesting contribution towards two pretty significant conservation projects around Ayers Lake. So one, and and these, I should point out that these two projects kind of connect into almost 1,000 acres of potentially conserved land in this area of town. These two specific projects, one called Ayers West is about 400 acres. And then the Donagan is 100 acres, two separate projects. So the Conservation Commission has met and had preliminary discussion about utilizing 100,000 for Ayers West and 75,000 for the 100 acres for Donagan. And so the, those contributions would make the town eligible for an executory interest in these conservation properties. And so as such, the select board is required to authorize any of these contributions. And so they're not ready to do that yet. The Conservation Commission, they've discussed it. They wanted to go out and talk with staff and others prior to taking a vote. The challenge is that the specifically, the Ayers West Conservation Project has a timeline with a budget closing, a budget closing for their grant application, I believe is the limiting factor. And so they're looking for a decision before our next select board meeting. And so I have later in the meeting, a topic, this is under new business, to talk about adding a select board meeting with a limited agenda on September 22nd. This was really the main motivation for that. The Conservation Commission kind of thought there was two meetings in September of the select board. There's just the one. And so I think it works out really well because there's a few other topics that we could discuss, including continuation of the invasive species conversation. While we're meeting with the Conservation Commission, it would be a joint meeting of the select board and Conservation Commission. But anyways, when I was talking to the chair, I said, you know, why don't we do this? We'll put those projects in front of the select board at this meeting just for discussion and any input or feedback from the select board. And then we can bring any of that, if there are questions, we can bring those answers or additional discussion to a potential future meeting, potentially on the 22nd, but we can talk more about that. So thoughts or questions about Conservation Commission making contributions to the two conservation projects?
No questions, I am not available.
Okay.
Vice Chair would have to come in.
I'll be in Scottsdale.
You're in Scottsdale. Two out of five of us are missing.
Are you available?
So we'll talk about it more when we get to new business and talk about some of the other things and decide how we want to approach that. But I'll make note, no Tracy, no Jim, 922. So moving on, training opportunities, a list of training opportunities upcoming, if any of you all are interested. I will mention, I see the our select board liaison has left, but I'll share the details of this with him and the superintendent. Carcy Policy Hour has in two days, on September 10th, a New Hampshire demographic trends, what it means for you. It's a one hour, 8 o'clock in the morning to 9 o'clock in the morning. Yes.
Just, he's amazing.
And so as the, anybody who follows demographic trends throughout New Hampshire knows that the school age population is declining rapidly throughout the state. And in Barrington, we have been insulated from that declining enrollment, likely due to the rate of development that that people are taking property they own and and residentially developing it. But it sounds like even given the rate of residential development that's happening, not because anybody's inviting it, but because it's happening, the enrollment is still falling, which is scary to think what the the future looks like. I mean, there are districts across the state that are facing real challenges to enrollment and what it means for the cost of running their school. The Claremont School situation is completely, it's it's not directly, doesn't seem to be directly related to enrollment at all. But one of the interesting things that came out of that discussion, they have a town populate or city population of 13,000. Barrington's just short of 10,000. And they operate three elementary schools. And so there's talk right now about closing one of those elementary schools and consolidating to the two. But that's, you know, those types of challenging discussions are are happening across the state, regardless of other financial impacts. So there's training opportunities.
So the budget finance one is excellent.
Yes, it is.
Full day, but very good.
And I believe our deputy chief is attending the budget workshop, the finance budget workshop NHMA this year?
It'll be both of us.
Our chief and our deputy chief, terrific. And that's all.
And for our municipal office administrator, Tiffany Connell.
You'll have a class six private road agreement in your inbox. Whenever you have the opportunity to sign it, I appreciate it. And that is for the building permit that was just approved, that's it.
Excellent, okay. Up next, old business.
Yes, Richardson Pond Dam project. So I'm very glad to report on some progress. I won't go through the the history, although it's written in the town administrator report. And I encourage anybody that's interested to read through that. But we have an engineer's cost estimate for construction in 2026. The total is $451,000. The scope is to reconstruct the Richardson Pond Dam, maintaining the same water level, but reducing the level of the dam in such a way that it would be non jurisdicitional, which is important for future costs and maintenance of the dam. And so this project has been ongoing for a long time. We talked earlier about the Conservation Commission and the funding of conservation projects. At one point, not this select board, but a prior select board, voted to put a moratorium on any conserving any additional land or the Conservation Commission contributing to the conservation of any additional land until a plan was in place for the Richardson Pond Dam. In response to that, the Conservation Commission funded engineering to include the engineering, which got us to a point where I have an engineer's cost estimate and those plans are continuing to be developed. The important part of having a dollar amount is that we are now ready to have the specific conversations with the Conservation Commission about how this project will be funded. And the select board has talked in general terms over the years of some sort of cost share with the Conservation Commission between the Conservation Fund and potentially a separate warrant article. And I think it's time now to have that specific discussion. The Conservation Commission has a copy of this cost estimate and I spoke with the chair about it. And so I I think we should consider maybe having a meeting with myself and the chair, with the Conservation Commission chair, maybe the treasurer, and come up with some sort of an initial proposal for both groups to consider. And then this was where it feeds into the joint meeting. Potentially at that joint meeting, talk more in earnest about how we come to to an agreement on a potential funding. I think we need to be careful to balance the scales in this proposed funding split. The, there is a sentiment in the community that this project should be funded 100% from the Conservation Fund because it's a conserved property and folks spoke up when it was conserved that there would be future cost and the Conservation Commission indicated at that time that they would bear the costs of taking care of the dam. A lot of time has passed and I don't think anybody probably anticipated then that it would be a $450,000 project, but that's where we are today. And so I think if there is separate funding proposed to voters on a separate warrant article, there's a real possibility that that article is defeated, either for that reason or simply because folks aren't prepared to spend additional dollars in in these economic times. And so the, any failed funding opportunity would do one of two things. One, force the entire project to be funded from the Conservation Fund because there aren't any other dollars available. Or delay the project, which I think delaying the project is, won't likely be acceptable to the state. We've been able to show them progress and and continue on the letter of deficiency. But I think we're to the, to a point where we need to do something and next year seems to be the year. So anyways, there's a lot that will go into that decision, that discussion and decision. And that's my suggestion, a meeting ahead of time with the leaders of the groups and then come back potentially at the 22nd or at this separate meeting and talk about it more specifically. Thoughts or questions about that approach? Okay.
Sounds good.
Great, so that's something that would be on the agenda of this added meeting. Ready to move on?
Yep, the Madberry Lee Fire Collaboration, you want to talk about that?
Yeah. The the meetings are great, they're clean. Everybody comes with with a good attitude and all their homework done. So it's really been a pleasure to be a part of it. That was virtual for the last meeting. But I would say that we're making good progress, talking about what we have for assets, what assets might be going out of service and starting to collaborate on if we have to go in different areas. How's it going to be? How are the residents going to respond? There's a lot of care, a lot of thought into that as well because, you know, at the demographics of where they are and where they need to be sometimes can be difficult. But so far, it's been a great group.
Absolutely, so our next meeting is in two days. We have, we will be meeting with the supervisor of the UNH Dispatch Center to talk about the coordination of shared dispatch services, which we already have. And at our last meeting, the vice chair of the McGregor Memorial EMS attended, which is terrific. I was in communication with the folks at Frisbee Hospital today, tracking the progress of the group. And so one of the things which is a priority to the group is having a really comprehensive set of minutes which describe the process the group is taking and sending these out. So each member of the committee is sending these out to various stakeholders after every meeting so that they can follow along to the work the group's doing. And we've heard a lot of feedback, oh, that's something I can help you with or I have an idea of how you could approach that. And so it's, it's really exciting. And I think in recent news, you may have saw that the city of Dover is exploring providing EMS services to Rollinsford, which is, I think, another interesting example of regional collaboration. I think that would be a contracted service model is what it looked like in the news. But we'll be interested to to follow that as the details are available. The last point on that is that the, the group identified November 10th as a potential joint meeting date to do a follow up joint meeting between the Madberry Lee and Barrington Select Boards. That's a Monday night, it's an off cycle meeting for the Barrington Select Board. But I wanted to check in on availability, put that on your calendar if it isn't, and check in on availability. And then separately, because we meet the 3rd and the 17th of that month, I wanted to check in to see if the select board wanted to cancel the November 3rd meeting. So we're not meeting three times in a row in November.
That would make sense.
Would we be meeting at the Madberry Fire Department again?
We didn't broach that. I I would imagine, I think that was a nice location. We have the working group meetings here so that we have virtual participation. So I think either Lee or Madberry would be my guess.
And then you're talking about canceling which meeting?
November 3rd.
Okay, got it, okay.
Not sure of availability.
So we're, if if we're ready to do that, we can vote now. Or if we want to check calendars and vote at the next meeting, we can do that.
I'll make a motion to cancel the November 3rd meeting and move it to November 10th.
And I'd second that, roll call please.
Samaco, aye.
Aye.
Kathy, aye.
No, I'm sure, no.
Okay.
Okay. Do you want to give us a reasoning?
Well, yeah, we're coming up in November here, it's probably time that we need to get to hustling a little bit, so I think it's probably worth doing an, an extra meeting. It was dependent a little bit on the, what we decide on the 22nd of September too, but I think we're reaching a point where we need to have our separate meeting on the 3rd.
You feel like there'll be enough after the budget meeting?
So I found last year, shifting the budget process where the department heads were meeting with the Advisory Budget Committee, I hel, I think helped streamline that process a lot. We have a, a great volunteer group focused on the budget with that and allowed the select board to kind of talk about these bigger picture ideas. I'm not initially very concerned about the, the workload as it relates to the November 17th meeting, consolidating that to the 17th. But I think something we could do also is i, if we're open to canceling it, if there's not a need to meet, we can make it a tentative meeting and decide as we get closer. So if there's, if there's work that needs to be done, certainly.
Want to revise to?
So my revised motion is to keep the November 3rd meeting open to scheduling.
Tentative attendance, okay.
And we will be tracking that in October, so indeed if we do need three, we can have three.
And I would second that motion as an amended motion. Roll call, please.
Samaco, aye.
I'll go with that.
I like your input.
Capiello, aye.
Sacoche, aye.
Heart of Kaffa, aye, motion carries, thank you.
Great.
I appreciate one person changes the whole thing.
I think that your perspective was valid. Um, new business, bringing Barrington history and trails together.
Yes, this is a, a very exciting proposal, and I think without introduction, I'll turn it over to select person Capiello.
Um, so I've been very interested in Barrington West Trail, Caleb's West Trail, I guess, because of it being a poor farm site and just all kinds of questions, like who lived there? Was it only men, were there women, were there children, whatever? And so when the UNH Trails and Downtown Economic Group was here, I pitched that idea, but they were focused on downtown, so it didn't fit within the geographic area. So I actually talked to Rob Gibson to see if he would like to, oh, Rob's back there. He is. To sort of co-chair this initiative. And he was quite excited, but he wanted to broaden it to all our trails. And in talking preliminarily with Conservation Commission and Trails Commission and Rob's sort of our conduit for that, people were more interested in a broad approach, looking at all of our conserved areas. So we're having our initial meeting on Wednesday at 10:00, and it's certainly open to the public if anyone has interest in that. We do have some preliminary work around mapping, our trails are ready with GIS based on some of the Stratford Regional Planning Commission work, so I'm hoping we can piggyback on those maps and add the historical sites to it. Then we'll have to figure out what kind of interpretive signage and stuff. So I don't have any cost proposals at this point, I'm just asking for interest. Do you think it's a good idea to proceed with?
I think it's an excellent idea. Um, when it, well, way back when I was in school here, we would, we would go and walk around town, whether it was at the cemeteries or on some of the trails that we were there.
That's a third grade.
Yeah. And, and I think it's very important to keep the history alive.
I think that goes along with our mission, vision and values that we've been working on, I think that's a fantastic.
I like the collaboration with us.
Um, yes, so is Rick still here? Because I hadn't been able to get him.
Several, yeah. But I'm, the library used to have books along a kid, Kid to the River, and those could be historic signs as well.
Okay.
Not just there, but at various, um, places.
I like it.
Excellent idea.
So if there are members of the public who are interested in this project, come to the meeting on Wednesday at 10:00 at the town hall.
In this room?
You're welcome. Uh, smaller room.
Smaller room across, okay.
I'm not anticipating we'll have a huge, at our first meeting.
In that discussion at the trail interconnectivity and UNH Cooperative Extension Downtowns and Trails, the, the, this idea was met with strong support across all portions of the table. It was terrific in this idea that we have so many conserved lands and trails. I mean, that's a core part of the fabric of Barrington is our trails and our natural resources. And so the idea of creating these curated opportunities for folks to, to not only just go on the trail, but learn about the history and have kind of a guided, and Winnie the Pooh Trail was used as kind of an example, like what a, what an awesome thing that you can go and, and you have this story walk, there's, there's something to learn. And so I think that could be a really unique thing for Barrington. And I'm so excited that there's folks interested in spending time on that and, and doing the research and stuff, so I'm really excited.
And the economic part of it is, I think we're envisioning with the interconnectivity trail portion is, you know, to have a QR code on a stand or, or in some way to promote Barrington businesses. So if you've done your hike and you want to get a sandwich, here's where you can go. So we're hoping to tie that into some economic benefit.
Excellent. Keno games.
Yes, okay. So for those of you that have followed along to Barrington politics, you'll know that the Barrington community voted three years in a row to, to not allow keno in Barrington. So the, our folks, our, our friends in Concord got wise to this approach that Barrington has taken in refusing to allow keno in Barrington. And they changed the rules.
Statewide, statewide, let's just go statewide.
So, so now instead of it being an opt-in program where communities have to affirmatively vote to allow keno at eligible establishments in the community, now it's an opt-out program. And so on June 1st of 2027, if Barrington does nothing, keno will be allowed at applicable establishments in Barrington. And so that essentially gives, you know, two town meetings opportunity to propose a vote, a vote no. And so in the past, all three of those years or, or years that I was here, and what I recall is that the select board felt strongly about one thing, and that's put it to the voters. The voters get to decide and put it to the voters. And so the, I think the message that we received, and the votes were always close, it wasn't ever, you know, a 75, 25, but the message that we received three years in a row is that the community wasn't particularly interested in having keno in Barrington. And so if, if we want to do another check-in on community members, whether they want keno in Barrington or not, or, or I should say, if they don't want keno in Barrington, then we should consider a warrant article for the 2026 one.
With or without the opt-out, are we getting any benefit from this? Is money still going towards schooling is, and so if we opt out, does our school district lose funds? Like, fill us in.
Yes, so there's no direct to the community, like the school or local government, direct impact to keno games. The state's portion of the profit of keno games and all lottery programs do go to help fund education. So there's a, a bigger picture benefit. And there's also a direct benefit to the establishment. I forget if I put the details in here, but I think they get like a 13% cut of the profits. Don't quote me on that because, but anyways, I, I was curious of, of what that direct benefit looked like. And so we, um, the town government doesn't get any extra revenue, the school government doesn't get any extra revenue. It may result in more revenue at the state level, which means they have more money to distribute to schools across the state, but that's the, the direct Barrington impact.
Okay. Do, go ahead.
So when you were presenting this, you made a point of saying eligible establishments. Do we even have any establishments in town currently that would be eligible?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the, the summarized version is if you have a liquor license, you, you're eligible for a, for keno. I don't, it's not that simple, but that's the.
So three. I've never played keno in my life, but I don't have a vested interest. Do we want to bring this before the voters and ask their opinion again?
I, I don't.
Otherwise it's just going to come.
Yeah. It's a done deal if we don't do anything, so I think we ought to at least present it. If, if the voters don't want to opt out, or don't want to opt out.
Whatever.
I'd like to hear from the eligible establishments too.
They're, they're very supportive. And, and they, they, the, the three years that it failed, they were, they were strongly supporting the opportunity to have keno.
Okay.
It's, it's an additional revenue source, you know? I don't think everyone would have it, but I'm happy to reach out to the establishments if you want. I think for the select board's purpose, out of respect for the community voting no three years in a row, it seems like probably the right thing to do to at least put it in front of them. It doesn't have to be put in front of them with any strong opinion. I, I should qualify what I said before. The select board as a whole didn't have a strong opinion. Former select board member George Bailey really wanted keno in Barrington. And, and every deliberative session, he would say, well, or, you know, if, if Barrington doesn't approve this, then I'm going to have to continue going to a neighboring community to, to play keno. But anyways, so do you want to just vote now to, to put an article, to, to prepare an article for the warrant?
Motion to prepare an article in regard to the state mandate on keno and allow our residents to decide whether to opt out or not.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Samaco, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Capiello, aye.
Sacoche.
So there's a second part of this, there's a second part of this, uh, this new statute relative to games of chance. And so the, the state law, the new state law allows a community town meeting to vote to prohibit games of chance and the prohibition on operator licenses for being issued in municipal boundaries by the lottery commission. And so I don't think this is a problem in Barrington right now, but I don't know if the select board has an interest in being proactive about that authority that the state has afforded communities in deciding.
Repeat that so that I can, give me the bullet points.
It's not lottery tickets.
No, these games of chance, so like the, all of the charity.
Bingo.
Casinos that are, are popping up are licensed facilities. And so this essentially gives a community the opportunity to vote and say, we, we don't want any in our community, or if there's already some in your community, prevent future licenses being issued for your community.
So you, your suggestion is that we include that all in the scope of one?
No. It'd be two separate articles.
Two separate articles. And.
But this is a new law, new authority that, that Concord provided to municipalities.
Well, we have to ask, anything that, anything that affects change within the community has to go before the voters, in my opinion.
You're going to know when to hold them, when to fold them.
So.
Okay, Kenny Rogers.
Is this regarding, like a church group wants to have a bingo night, that come under?
Bingo? I don't know, I can, I can research that. I don't know about a, I don't know about a bingo. It doesn't apply to raffles.
It does not apply to raffles, okay, good to know.
But bingo night, it may apply. Let me research that.
Yeah.
So maybe, maybe we'll get that answer and then review it in upcoming, we've got plenty of time.
And does it prohibit Barrington nonprofits from receiving charitable funds from external gambling?
I think you could have got on that list.
So that's a new, so, so the charity casinos, my understanding of the eligibility is the casinos have, uh, are able to choose charities to provide to.
Correct.
Including charities outside of their community.
Certainly.
The state law changed this year, and the change allowed the host municipality to apply for funding from the charity casino. So that, so Salem was one of the communities.
Sure.
In this first round, got on the list. I don't think they knew how much money they had gotten by the time the news article went out. So that's a law that changed and said outside of just charities, now the host municipality can apply.
Same 10-day contribu, like when, when it's a nonprofit applying, there's a 10-day, so everything else applies the same, up to 10 days in the profit.
But Barrington as a town government couldn't apply for the lilac.
Because it's not located here.
Because it's not, we're not hosting. So prohibiting games of chance would prevent that potential future limited funding source?
If we opened a casino in Barrington? I, I mean Connor, yeah, okay.
Well, but you're talking about a nonprofit casino.
They're all non.
They're all nonprofits, they're all supporting charities, our, our, we've had local nonprofits here in Barrington benefited from this in large amount, so.
To your point, Madam Chair, I, I don't think this is a pressing concern for Barrington right now, but it's, like I said, it's new authority, something that we may want to get in front of voters.
We still have to ask the voters, yes.
I'll figure out about bingo, but the sense from the select board is because we have, because voters have this authority, there's some interest in putting an article in front of them to give them an opportunity to exercise that authority.
Thoughts?
I need some more information.
Yeah.
Yeah, and like, I, I don't like telling somebody you can't have a revenue source, you know?
And we have a lot of community organizations in town that I wouldn't want them to be impacted by.
No, they're not. I think that's the whole purpose of this.
Let me research the bingo, I don't have an answer to that. Are there other questions you'd like to get answered?
If, if they decide not to have, for instance, a casino within Barrington's 46 square miles, the nonprofits that still exist in Barrington can still apply and receive funding from all New Hampshire casinos.
Sure, I'm, I'm thinking more about, you know, the bingo kind of things, you know, I'm thinking about making sure that anything that we present is specific enough to provide that everybody else that's already doing things can continue to operate as the status quo and not be impacted by that.
Okay.
I think the bigger goal here, the bigger picture is because, you know, they, they deal with some nonprofits and, and getting on that list is very challenging, so I think to open up more monies, that's why it's come to this full fold of, hey, we're going to opt everybody in, make more monies available.
So this is different than the opt-in, the, the state has the authority, the lottery commission has an author, has authority to issue a license in Barrington today. This would be saying, we can vote and say we don't want them to issue a license for the games of chance in Barrington. So the status quo right now is a license could be issued. Like I said, I don't think it's a pressing concern, I, I don't, should not, I wouldn't, not trying to invite anything to Barrington, but the.
Would a vote have any standing with the state in New Hampshire?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, and that's what the new law says.
Would we guard?
Yes, that's what the new law says.
That's point.
So let me research bingo, we've got plenty of time to talk about it ahead of town meeting, which I want to put on your radar. If other things occur to you, if you have other questions, get them to me, we'll get answers ahead of the next meeting.
Okay.
Awesome.
Cub Scout camp on the common.
So we start having events down there at the Barrington Common Property, people start taking notice, and one of the things that the local Cub Scout troop stopped a number of years ago because of COVID was having a local campout experience for the kids in the troop. And it was just after the truck show, folks reached out and said, hey, could we do our campout on the Barrington Common Property? And personally, I think it's a terrific idea, and I am bringing the proposal to the select board, it's kind of a short turnaround. The, the campout would be October 4th to the 5th, and they'll host a community food drive on the 4th. They have about 30 active members, they don't expect more than 50 people on the property. The public safety, our public safety leaders and our Parks and Recreation Director are very supportive of the proposal and the idea. The, there, if there is any way that they can safely have a fire on the property, our public safety leaders are committed to supporting the, the, having a campfire for the Cub Scout local campout. And so one of the limitations for that is having water on site, having the means to put out the fire on site. And so they were talking about even having just a, one of those framed water cubes available that, you know, so we're not tying up any resources, but having water available so they can put out a fire. So the, so they bring their own porta potty, and like I said, folks were supportive of, of the idea.
What about insurance?
Yes, they have insurance through their parent organization, the town of Barrington would be named as additionally insured and reviewed by the town's insurance provider.
I know we authorize local Cub Scout troop to utilize Barrington Common Property, October 4 and 5, 2025, for a campout experience subject to use rules and restrictions issued by Parks and Recreation and Public Safety Leaders.
Second.
Second. Roll call, please.
Samaco, aye.
Mantrick, aye.
Capiello, aye.
Sacoche.
Heart of Kaffa, aye, motion carries, let's let our Cub Scouts camp out, that's terrific.
Great, thank you.
Madberry Service Contract.
So.
This was interesting.
This is interesting.
Now we're going to regionalize it.
Yes.
Sorry.
So the, this is, you know, when we start turning over stones for finding efficiencies, right? We, we are forced in our, in our roles as municipal governments to find better and more efficient ways to provide services to our residents on an ongoing basis. And we started the conversation with exploring regionali, regionals, uh, excuse me, regionalizing our fire protection services. our fire protection services. And in having this group with Madberry and Lee, it's tremendously insightful to talk about our collective communities, services that we provide, the limitations that we have. Anyways, the town of Madberry currently has zero full-time employees, and they're, they understand with their trajectory, they recently went from an elected road agent to an appointed road agent, and now they're looking at having, potentially having full-time staff and equipment. And so I give a lot of credit to their select board, the three-member select board, spending a lot of time thinking ahead for their community on how they can, you know, approach these problems, solve them for the community in an attainable way. And so one of the early hurdles that they've identified is that the hiring full-time staff means a lot, it triggers a lot of requirements that they're not prepared to address currently. And so they want to have a scope of that. They want to know what it takes to have full-time staffing in a New Hampshire municipality. And so they asked if they could contract with the town of Barrington, with the human resources expertise that we have, to help them answer some of these questions. And so I talked to the Human Resources Administrator, and I said, hey, look, this is something that, that you would do outside of your time in Barrington. We'd pay you overtime for the work and bill that to the town of Madberry. And, but having a services contract would allow that work to be done. If they had something, you know, during the day, she could take a call, she could, you know, talk to them about some aspect of municipal human resources operations and, you know, continue her work elsewhere and track her time for the town of Madberry. She is very interested and open to the idea. She has the capacity. She doesn't, she doesn't work outside of Barrington, and she's interested in doing this. So I worked with the town's attorney to kind of draft up what an agreement would look like that adequately protects Barrington. We're both insured by Primex, and so any, any mistakes, the cost of those mistakes are borne by the risk pool anyways, so it's not necessarily, like any one community gets higher premiums because of a mistake. But it was important to me that in providing, if we were to provide such services, that the town wouldn't be liable for any of the decisions made, made based on the recommendations or advice provided. And so you see that language in there. And like I said, compensation, so this would cover the Human Resource Administrator's overtime rate with associated payroll taxes, rounded up, you know, to the nearest $5, covered some additional processing costs. And it's a short term, either, either party could terminate it at any time if, if things weren't working out, or it didn't make sense, or workloads changed. And so this proposal is through March 9 of 2026, and the scope is included in there, things like reviewing the handbook and providing advice and on full-time positions and wage scales, maintaining employee files, looking at job descriptions, and support and aid future hiring processes for town staff, looking at benefits and other resources.
Give any sense of the amount of time involved on that person?
So my conversation with the chair in Madberry is that, you know, our Human Resources Administrator doesn't work at the town hall on Fridays, and the bulk of the work that she would be doing supporting their communities on Fridays, and that works really well for them. And so we talked about limiting in this proposed agreement, the hours or the work in some way, and felt like maybe it was better to just manage that as, as necessary. They don't expect any more than five hours a week on average of support services from Human Resources, but there may be a project that Debbie would work on, and maybe she's got time and she does 15 hours in a week, you know, putting together something, but outside of her time in Barrington.
I think it would be important to attach to this a position description specific to the work that she is doing over there. This is creating a contract with the town of Barrington, but it's not necessarily providing a position description for the work she would do for them. And as we know, scope creep occurs when you find an expert in a field and you begin to realize that that expert can do far more than what you initially thought. So my thoughts on this would be that a position description would be attached to this, indicate that it's an, as with any other employment in the state of New Hampshire, at will. And I'm not sure I've read, is there a termination clause?
Yes. Yeah, so basically take paragraph two where it describes the scope and, and put that into a position description, and those listed essentially as the essential position functions.
And then the only other thing I would modify is that should expansion or scope creep or essential position functions begin to be added to the person's work, that the rate would be analyzed. For instance, if they begin to have or do a comp study, it certainly wouldn't be at $55 an hour, so something to consider.
So just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, the compensation that they are paying only covers per pay and then the associated taxes and benefits. So the town is not getting anything out of this?
It's a pass through.
That's, that's the proposal right now, and I, I am open to the select board's input on that approach. I guess the exploring, in the spirit of exploring regional cooperation, I think providing some limited short-term assistance is, is a cooperative approach, but I don't think that necessarily has to be the case, and, and, you know, that's wise before the select board.
It's just something I would be careful with. I mean, clearly additional resources were invested in this. Our town council has looked at this, you know, so that is time being spent. So, you know, I'm fully support regional cooperation, but I do think that there needs to be some balance when it comes to taking time from numerous town employees for something that, you know, there would be no remuneration for the town. So just, just something to be careful with.
I think it's a point well made. How does the board feel about that?
I'm agreeing with.
I have a question, though. If, if we did nothing, could Madberry hire that person to do five hours a week and pay them directly? I think this gives us a little more control. She's not supposed to work, I mean, she's not working here. What does she do for her second job?
And to that point, would she be using our computers, the office here, you know?
So my, to, to give you the kind of full trajectory, so when this idea was first proposed to me, my recommendation was that she be an employee of Madberry. And.
They said.
And, and just simply not involve the town of Barrington. The challenge was, was I guess maybe two main things. They're not, they're just as much not in a position to be able to add additional staff for themselves as they are to hire as an employee, a consultant as an employee. They're, they're, they just don't have the capacity that they need, they need a human resources professional to help guide them through a process like that. And so that was my first recommendation, to keep, just, just keep a clear separation of duties and responsibilities. It, it doesn't make sense to hire somebody like Debbie as an independent contractor, because she doesn't have her own insurance, and it wouldn't make sense to bear those costs and go through that for this kind of like, hey, tell us what we don't know about hiring staff. And so that's where we got to a services contract, which is, wasn't my first idea, wasn't, wasn't my first preference, but I think is, is the best way to approach it holistically. But I, I don't think it, I don't think it's a bad point that, you know, maybe there needs to be reflected in the rate that they pay, some direct benefit to the, some direct financial benefit to the town of Barrington, so we can, you know, look at residents and say, hey, the fact that, you know, she's using a town-issued laptop when she does this work, that these additional dollars an hour are going in towards, you know, replacement of that or.
I just think that the, the sort of spider webbing of costs, that little miniscule costs that we would bear here and there for even supplies, keeping the lights on.
Happens fast, sure.
It adds up fast, and we are looking at tightening our belts as much as we can. So anywhere where we see, these little things are going to add up. So I really do think that there needs to be something in here that covers our costs, the time invested in, you know, getting to this point of your time that the town is paying for, and this building that the town is paying for, printer paper that the town is paying for. So I do think that there needs to be something here that, that covers those unseen costs to make sure that we're, you know, we, we like having a cooperative relationship, but we're not here to bear their costs because they're smaller.
I would also add to your termination clause in here, that should, should the agreement terminate, all records and intellectual knowledge would be pertaining to Madberry would be turned over to them, and that they would be responsible for the retention of records. For instance, I9s, you have to keep them for a full year after termination. We don't want to be keeping those here and responsible for those. All records for seven years for employees for the purposes of workers' comp in the state of New Hampshire and the Federal Department of Labor. So there's a lot to, I think, consider with that. I like the idea of moving it upward, being mindful of that. And I just think there's a couple more areas that you could add to the contract.
So I'll make an important point. I brought that up as well. The, the town, and I'll make, I'll find a place to, to make that clear if the select board's interested in moving forward, but the, there, the town will not be responsible for maintaining any records, not only personnel records, but also government access, public records. That responsibility is the town of Madberry. They will always have everything that we have, and that will be their responsibility. So I can make that clear. So if, if we're looking at increasing the rate, do you want to take that kind of direct cost rate or the rounded up direct cost rate and add 15%, 25%?
I think 15% is appropriate. The, the other thing is, you know, we write contracts, for instance, police chief, and the police chief has to then approach the select board in taking on additional work. I would write that position description with up to eight hours of additional work done for Madberry. And limit it to that. Should it step outside of that, it's potentially going to begin to impact other areas of job performance.
Is this a one-way street as far as, you know, we're helping them out, or say, if we get overwhelmed in our office, is she going to come help us out? Is that an option?
They don't have any she.
Oh, we're.
There is no HR professional over there. Okay.
This is a, this is a one-way services contract. I mean, I think the, I think big picture, the reason that even though this approach wasn't my first preference, I think, big picture, exploring opportunities to leverage shared benefits, shared resources, is, is worth dipping our toe into, in a, in a break-even or a better-for-Barrington-a-little-bit way, so that we can see what opportunities lie under other stones that we turn. And so I, I haven't approached the, I haven't, I haven't exclusively approached the idea of regional cooperation with a, let's make sure every, everything is immediately in the best interest of Barrington approach, simply because if every community approached it that way, we wouldn't even have meetings. You know, there, there would be enough reasons to say, this part might be a little less beneficial for this community, and so, you know, we, we'll just, we'll just stop here. So I, I fully expect that there will be opportunities in the future that, you know, certainly with our, you know, our mutual aid, automatic mutual aid, excuse me, there, there are already times that we benefit from the services and resources of the town of Madberry, but I don't think that they would be providing us human resources support in the short term.
Yeah.
So $65 an hour, that's a rounded up of 15%?
That's fine. I, I also think it is quite likely, there's a lot of material already available throughout the state that's shared online. I, I would suggest that likely in the beginning, as she's creating the core of the documents that they need, is when she most likely will be doing the work, and then it will.
And to be clear, I, I support this cooperation. I just don't support, you know, right now, the taxpayers of Barrington's footing the incrementally accumulating incidentals of, of such a contract, so.
Great point.
Okay. Anyone like to make a motion in reference to this?
I thought we were going to wait and see.
Would you like to wait and see?
I don't, I don't think we need to wait and see. I have a list of changes to make. The select board could authorize it with those changes, and if there's issues with those changes, then we can bring it back. I mean, I'll point out that for contracted human resources, sources, services, $65 is a very reasonable rate to pay.
Sure.
And so I don't, I don't, I don't feel that's inappropriate at all.
Okay.
Then.
Okay.
I move to authorize human resources consulting service contract with the caveats discussed at the meeting tonight with the town of Madberry through March 9th, 2026.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Samaco, aye.
Well, I guess I'll speak yes, aye.
Dan, and, Dan, and, Dan, and go ahead. Capella, aye.
Article five, the motion carries. Get a free comedy show at the select board meeting, everyone. Okay. Joint Conservation Meeting, I know that September 22nd does not work. We were going to take a vote. Do you want to, you want to suggest other dates to us, and we just agree that we will observe another date?
So let me, let me talk about how this evolved and some of the other things that I think it makes sense to talk about at this collective meeting. If we're going to have a, a meeting with a limited agenda, so the, having the appropriate stakeholders participate in some of these discussions and getting folks in the same room, I think is really helpful and will, will be really helpful. And so the few topics that I would like to discuss at this separate meeting, which I don't think will be on the 22nd, is the cost share proposal for the Richardson Pond Dam. Mentioned earlier, have an initial meeting outside of select board in this meeting where we can draft a proposal and then talk about it in earnest. And I'd love to find a way to get to a proposal that the Conservation Commission Select Board can vote on at that meeting, and we know what we're doing. We're not going to draw this out through the budget development process. Review the Conservation Commission contributions to the Ayers Lake Conservation Projects. So I think it will be important to resolve, if, if possible, resolve the Richardson Pond Dam Funding Plan ahead of authorizing these conservation project expenditures. And so I think that flows really nicely to consider those at the same time and in that order. And then we could continue the conversation. We'll have done some research now that we have a nod from the select board, but we'll continue the conversation about invasive species mitigation. Think this would be an excellent opportunity to talk with the Conservation Commission, assuming that it's a joint meeting, talk to them about their resources and their, how they feel about possibly reserving some of the conservation fund as, as their own decision for the purposes of protecting Barrington Lakes and what that could look like. There are many opportunities, and I'll put a whole list together, but, you know, right now, 75% of the land use change tax goes into the conservation fund. That could be increased to 100% and a portion reserved for, of the conservation fund reserved for invasive species. It could be reduced to 50%, and then there's the, the separate 25%. It couldn't go directly, but, you know, money's fungible. So that, that 25% reduction could be a separate Warren article, capital reserve fund where those dollars are going in there, so it's a net neutral for, for property taxpayers in Barrington. And so I think there are a lot of options that a conversation with the Conservation Commission early on will help figure out what, what makes sense.
Can we look at maybe the 18th, Thursday, the 18th? I know the Conservation Commission canceled their meeting on the 11th.
No, they do have their meeting on the 11th.
Why do I have it canceled now?
Yeah, no, that's when they're voting on. Have you heard of this?
I have a canceled meeting in the calendar.
They canceled. Are you sure that wasn't the energy?
September 11th. I'm just telling you what the calendar. Yeah.
Look at all the different dates on that, because it says Barrington Conservation Commission Meeting, September 11th, 2025. I, I think there very much is a Conservation Commission meeting.
Meeting on the 11th, could we meet the 18th then?
Let me look at my calendar.
I'm free.
I'm not sure.
Okay.
If I could figure this out.
Oh, September.
Thursday.
It's a Thursday.
I'm gone from 18 to 22.
Oh, you are? Okay, well, I, okay.
Good timing, good plan.
Let's choose another date.
I, I'm also gone many dates in September, so I apologize now, but my availability is really limited.
Hopefully there's no more travel for me.
So I can, I can just send out a. So I can, I can just send out a doodle and, and we can find dates that way.
Yeah, pull together a quorum, sure.
Yes. So the fourth item would be a review of the Reduced Scope Ayers Lake Boat Launch Project. So we'll have, so there's a Plan B and a Plan C. Plan B still requires a permit by NHDES. And so having the Conservation Commission, having that joint meeting and having an opportunity for the Conservation Commission to review that and consider signing on to that permit will be valuable also. And so that meeting, I, I would imagine that meeting would be limited to the scope of like those four topics, nothing else. And we have the stakeholders, we have the Conservation Commission, we have folks from the Ayers Lake Community about the conservation projects and the boat launch. We have folks from the other lake associations with discussion about the invasive species. And we have folks, anybody that cares about the Richardson Pond Dam and funding, you know, I might invite the planning board members during previous CIP processes. The planning board has had strong opinions about that. So inviting them to be part of that discussion may be helpful.
Right. Would you like to still entertain a motion subject to date availability?
Yes.
Okay. Is Madam Chair entertaining motions at this time?
Absolutely.
So I move that we add a date TBD, limited scope, joint select board and Conservation Commission meeting to review the Richardson Pond Dam, Ayers Lake Conservation Projects, Lake and Pond Invasive Species Mitigation Funding, and the Reduced Scope Ayers Lake Boat Launch, subject to the availability of participants.
Any questions, comments, or concerns before we do a vote?
Okay.
Roll call.
Samak, aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Thank you all.
Plan a 6:30 meeting, so we'll just send out a doodle with dates. If you, I'll get that to you tonight. And so if you can try to respond sometime tomorrow, if, if possible, and then we'll firm that up and we can get it scheduled and get the word out.
Okay. Report outs, please, from select board members on their committees.
Yes. So the zoning board of adjustment met on August 20th for two cases, three motions. They denied a request for a special exception for access to a property not from the road frontage. And in the denial of that, the add-on motion of a variance was withdrawn because it was no longer necessary. There was also a mixed-use construction project on Beauty Hill Road that had been tabled for some time, that ultimately the determination of the the land use office did not actually need a variance for that project, so they will go to the planning board from there.
Dana? Report outs for your multiple committees.
I missed all the meetings we had.
Okay.
Rick reported about the school board meeting. And again, our, the ABC will meet on the 15th October to start deliberations. There we are.
Okay.
Planning Board, this was the first go-around of the yield plan for the Coots Farm Development. That's a 600 acres off in the western part of town. There were a number of a butter letters. I was not able to attend the meeting, but I'm sure that that was a full meeting house of resident concerns.
Did attend. There was quite a bit of public comment about that, but everything remained civil and collaborative, I would say.
And I'll point out just real quick, if you don't mind, Jim, the, I've asked the town planner to consider preparing a, some sort of a PR plan, a communication plan for that project, which is a project at a scale that we're not used to in Barrington. And there's also, the town doesn't have an application yet, but there, we expect there to be a project application in the near future about the gravel pit project on Green Hill Road. And so I think the, you know, there's there's a lot of interest in development projects of the scale of either of those. And so taking a different approach than we do with all of our other projects, given the scale, I think would be valuable in terms of information sharing and helping folks who don't usually pay attention to development projects, helping them understand what stage of the process. So, for example, the project out on Coop Farm, this is the very first meeting. They're looking at a yield plan. They're, they're considering how many units the, the land could support from a regular subdivision plan, project, proposed project from the planning board. And so the plan that they have and showing development of the whole property, that isn't what they're proposing to do. That's what they're, you know, trying to figure out how many units the town would permit on a piece of property based on our regulations, not on feelings and emotions. But anyways, approaching the projects in that way. So be on the lookout for that. And if you have suggestions, definitely get with the town planner to help, just inform folks on what their role is. We have the Butter Guide online, which is really helpful. We mail that to folks also. But stay, stay tuned for that. Didn't mean to cut you off.
Okay.
The Fire Collaboration Group, we heard about that earlier. As far as Parks and Rec, construction is underway on the building, upstairs and down. But also, more importantly, this Friday night is Retro Night plus Outdoor Movie. And the Outdoor Movie is the Sandlot. And you can join the Barrington Parks and Rec for a double feature of fun at Retro Night. They are turning in the Barrington Elementary School parking lot into a roller, roller rink for skating, scootering, and grooving to the sound of DJ Mike Greer. After skating fun, stick around as they partnered with the Barrington PTO to host a screening of the classic baseball favorite, the Sandlot, underneath the stars.
Fun.
Awesome.
So in reference to conservation, they did their treasurer's report. They reported out the same amount that's indicated in the town administrator's report, balance on conservation fund, $826,069.80. They discussed easement monitoring coverage as one of their members had suffered an injury, so they have passed additional work on to, I think, perhaps Paul Panish, who was absent. So when you miss a meeting, you get assigned work. They discussed the Ayers Project. They discussed invasive species. They discussed the Sunday Solar Event, which will be part of the Town Center September 21st event and having a table there and discussing solar power here within Barrington. They discussed the Christmas Dove Development that is before the town planning board for finalization, I think, yes?
They asked for a year extension.
Well, and they've asked for a year extension, so that will sit around. And then they discussed, they review all of the species here within Barrington, certainly discussed, I'm gonna, broad-winged hawks and Cooper hawks and small fawn. I don't know what this word is, but small fawn that they're seeing late in the season. Turkey chicks, which if any of you are driving Barrington roadways, they are blocking our travel everywhere, so drive slow. I've seen a lot of turkey families. I don't know if they're called clutches or not, but they're, they're, a lot of them gathered. And then the Energy Committee talked about the town hall solar update and how we generated negative bill, which means that we created more energy than we used, which is super exciting. I'd love to hear that on any of the municipal buildings. I think the person who attends the Community Power Coalition was not able to attend that meeting, so I don't think a report out has taken place on that. And then they have a few other, they have a financial audit underway. They talked about the Aspire Program, which is a solicitation program to increase renewable energy. And Barrington's looking pretty good as far as our solar and how we're working on our written zoning ordinances for solar. And I think we updated, if I'm correct, from just a bronze rating to a gold. If I got that right, Rob? Yeah. So I like, I, I like to hear that because it, it means that we're, yeah. We're doing some work there. So I think that, did I miss anything? No. Okay. So those were my updates from the meeting minutes from both of those meetings. At this time, I'm going to open the second public comment portion of our meeting. If you're online, you wish to speak, please mouse over your screen, click on your little raised hand icon. You'll be recognized. I don't see anyone online. If there's anyone in house who would like to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and your address here in Barrington. You have three minutes, total of 15 minutes. Cumulatively, if multiple people would like to speak. Oh, please. If you'll state your name and address to begin with.
I sure will. My name is Paul Hanson.
Okay.
I reside at 42 Bully Road in Barrington, also known as Micah Point Island in Swains Lake. Before I begin, I just want to thank you as a select board for the service you provide to the community. I moved back here in 2022. Prior to that, I lived in the town of Pembroke, where I served for many years on the Budget Committee. So I understand that you have a somewhat thankless job at times, so thank you very much for your service.
I thought you were coming here to volunteer for a second.
I was thinking we could sign you up for the school advi, yeah.
Side note, I, at the last town meeting in Pembroke, a woman approached me and said, I want to thank you so much for having the toughest job in Pembroke. And I looked at her and I said, not even close. And she said, excuse you, what could be tougher than this? And I said, have you ever been the home plate umpire for the town Little League Championship Series? I was an umpire for 39 years. So I do have some things I would like to share. If I can find it. Beautiful. It's disappeared. I love it. Love phones. First off, I'll say that my family has owned the property on Swains Lake since I was nine years old. I have a lot of experience on the lake. Last year, my well went dry. I called in two companies, Federal Well and Piping from Freedom, New Hampshire, and Epping Well and Pump from Epping to give me my available options. They both told me the same thing. Your well functions very well. It just has no water in it. When you live, my wife and I live there year-round. When you even conserve water, you're talking about 25 to 30 gallons a day for washing, drinking, washing dishes, flushing toilets. What that meant was we would take these, five or six of these five-gallon containers to Northwood, New Hampshire almost every day, if not every day, every other day. Right across from Johnson's Dairy Bar in Northwood on Route 4 is a place called Tasker Well. They have a public water fountain that you can take these, pull the spigot, and fill them. I put them in the back of my Jeep virtually every day. Full, they each weigh a little more than 40 pounds. I'm 69 years old. My wife is also 69 years old. I really don't want to be hauling water for, for a long time. I understand drought conditions. I understand normal dropping of the lake. I also understand the control of the dam. And what I would ask for, for anyone who is going to be controlling the dam and the water that goes in and out of that, the lake, that it's critically important, not only for recreation, but for living. We had neighbors who have started last month, first week of August, removing their boats from the lake for the season, the first week of August, because props and lower units of outboard motors are prohibitively expensive to replace and to repair. So I just want to bring to the attention of the select board that the level of Swains Lake matters. I have nothing else to add.
Thank you. Not sure if anyone's ever told you about the natural water supply on Estes Road right off of Gear Road in Rochester. Maybe closer for you?
I was going to say, now you tell me.
I'm sorry. It, it's there.
The only public access I was aware of was the one in Northwood.
No, I lived a, but less than a mile from that location, and it's spring-fed, comes right out of the side of a mountain. So Estes Road, it's really even kind of hard to spot, but I, I don't know. I just know that it's spring water and everyone uses it, so.
This one, there's a sign right on it. It's tested regularly and.
Okay. Well, just, just to let you know, even for non-potable option, it might be something to.
I appreciate it. It's just.
I can't imagine.
Well, we lost water just before Christmas. And we got it back the latter part of February.
Wow, okay.
So that's how critically important the water level.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that we, oh, I'm sorry. Please, go ahead. I'm sorry. I wasn't, I wasn't looking up. My apologies. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. This, my name is Joanna Weston, and I'm a lake resident, and I live on 403 Micah Point Road, Swains Lake. And unlike Paul, I am new to the lake life. I, this will be my sixth year living there. And I heard you talk, Connor. I know that you spoke with another lake resident of ours, Wendy Trembley.
Yes.
And when she shared her concerns for the level of the lake being low and how it's affecting the residents, I think she probably also shared her concerns about how it, it, it also affects the success or failure of loons nesting, and some species of fish spawning. And it's really hard for us to keep our boats on the lake, like Paul said. I am, I love the lake, and I love to boat on the lake, and I love to swim. I swim almost every day on the lake. And my boat actually, for the first time, hit a rock because the lake is so low, and my engine failed. So I had to get, luckily, a new used engine. But thinking about all of us residents and how many, how much we pay in taxes on the lake. And the other thing that's also affects the lake is that the, the cyanobacteria, because when the lake is really low, it, it seems to last a lot longer. And I know, like Paul said, that we are in a drought, but we also I, I've never seen it, the lake, this low. So I think that also it's probably artificially being dropped to save this culvert. So my question to you, Connor, because I heard you mention earlier that there are bids out for getting this culvert fixed. And I'm wondering if you know if there's a timeframe of when this is going to be done. Wendy said that you had talked to her and, and said that it's, there's a likely chance that it'll be done before the end of this year. And I'm hoping that that's the case and that we don't have to deal with this another season. Also, the the new road agent that you mentioned that's been hired, is that correct?
Public Works Director, yeah.
Public Works Director. Yeah, it, it's probably very imperative that he knows of our situation of all the residents on the lake and how important it is to consider, you know, to get this moving forward quickly so that, that we're not so affected by it.
Very good.
So the select board would have to suspend their rules for me to respond. I'm happy to if the select board wants to. It's up to the select board.
We're at 8:39, but yes, please, bullet point version if we could.
Okay, so two, two important points. First, the town's operation of the dam is guided by a, a drawdown plan prepared by a licensed engineer. When we put that drawdown plan together, we involve lakefront property owners, anybody who is interested in the lake association. And so it, the, the operations of the dam for seasonal drawdown or other operations of the dam are guided directly from that document. It's available online. Did you see the letter that the town prepared with the project updates, and it's included in the town administrator report?
No.
So I, I can get you a link to that. I can give you my copy, and it's available on the town's website. But the, in that project update memo is a link to the drawdown plan also. It, one of the things that's addressed in that memo is that the, the going into, and, and this is, was a source of misunderstanding from folks, but the but going into the season, we anticipated the need to draw down Swains Lake earlier than normal because of the projects this fall, because we can only let so much water out of the lake. Unfortunately, Mother Nature, unfortunately for lakefront property owners, Mother Nature beat us to it. So the gate on the dam has been completely closed for two months. And so when it was closed, the lake was full. So the early spring rains made the town really worried about what the level of the water would do to the planned projects in the fall. And so we don't need to draw down the lake early because the drought and evaporation and natural seepage of the dam have lowered the lake level to far more than we need for the projects at the dam this fall. And so that's an important point. I mean, the plan, once these projects are completed, is to update that drawdown plan and talk about we'll have more flexibility with the drawdown plan with the updated, upgraded culverts at the Lakeside Oaks Drive crossing. So we'll have the ability to let more water out of the lake faster, which means we won't necessarily have to start drawdown as soon for winter drawdown. We can explore options that the state and others exercise on other dams and doing a cyclical, larger drawdown to give people an opportunity to work on their docks and other structures. And so that update process, the update process for that drawdown plan is anticipated. Maybe not next year, probably let the projects complete and then understand what additional flexibility we have and then hire a professional to update that project. So this is a copy of that letter. If you want, you can have that. But it's available on the town's website also, if you just go to the homepage of the website. And that's when I talked to Ms. Tremblay. I sent her that letter and asked her to send it out to anybody that she talked to about it just because she had questions and I said, "There's a lot of information here." I'm just checking to see... Oh, you asked about the timeline of the projects. So the projects are on schedule? We expect that they'll be completed this fall? Oh, I don't have a date. I mean, we won't have a specific project schedule until we hire a contractor for the project. And so all the projects are bundled together. So, but the level of the lake, the level of the lake won't change with the projects. The projects, the lake is low enough. They'll be doing the work on the gate box with a cofferdam anyways. So it's, you know, they won't be letting out all the water necessary. They'll be doing that water with a temporary cofferdam.
I've got you past three minutes, so unless there's something new that you really feel you need to add, I'm going to let you take up discussion with Connor separately and ask if there's anyone else that would like to speak during public comment.
Tiffany will grab you a business card. Feel free to give me a call. Stop by tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Anyone else that would like to speak for three minutes, please? Okay. At this time, then, I'm going to close public comment. Next up, I'd like to make a motion to enter a non-public session under RSA 91-8-32 for the purposes of personnel and legal.
Second.
Have a second. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Simak, oh, I.
Patrick, oh.
Gaby, oh, I.
It's okay.
And Hardikoff, I. Thank you. Okay.
Welcome everyone back to the non-public session for purposes of personnel and...
Legal.
Legal. Meeting is...